Consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar tonight, and all the matters listed under consent are considered to be routine.
Yeah, hello.
There we go.
Now I can hear myself. They're considered to be routine and will be entertained as one motion, so we will not have individual discussions on the three items unless there is a member of the public or a member of the commission that would like to pull one of these items. The three items on tonight's consent calendar are an ordinance amending municipal code, Chapter 17.03, to define supportive housing and transitional housing as required by state law; a design permit and conditional use permit for an alteration on the rear elevation of a historic single-family home and new detached garage located in the Single Family Residential Zoning District, specific address 113 Oakland Avenue; and lastly, a design permit for rear addition to an existing single-family residence located in the Single Family Residential Zoning District at specific address 4850 Opal Street. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull one of these items for specific discussion? Seeing none, any commissioners have any issues with these items? Ed?
Yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to address item B, 113 Oakland Avenue. I have no problem with the project, so I'm not going to pull it, but I wanted to... The issue that I wanted to at least throw out for discussion is that I think that the city's identification of historic homes and buildings is unclear and needs to be buttoned down very much in what we're going to be doing. We've had, in the past, some problems with whether or not a particular property... One property came and had to get a historic review because an official lived there at one point in time, which makes maybe all of our homes now historic. And other than identification of the what are and what are not historic buildings in Capitola, the other problem is that I think we need to decide what kind of standards we want to apply to historic buildings. And we've found in the past that the Department of Interior Standards, which are national standards, really don't work that well for Capitola, so I think we need to look for some other paradigm as we move forward with this. I mean, it's an important subject, but I don't think we're really very far along to where we should be on this issue.
I agree.
I also had a comment on the same one, so thanks Commissioner Newman, because I kind of share the same sentiments, that the lack of direction, I think, lends itself to some issues with this. And one of my concerns, and I think Commissioner Newman touched on it, is the Secretary of Interior Standards. In this historical document that they wrote on it, said that it has to be made, and I guess this is really specifically in reference to the bell part of the bottom of the structure, it has to be different than what the original structure was, because that's the Secretary of Interior Standards. And personally, I just kind of am opposed to that. This is the back part of the house. To me, it'd be nice, and again, this is a subjective, but if it carried out the same theme of the whole house. So I think moving forward with some type of standard that meets Capitola's needs would be something we should strive for.
I think both comments are well taken, and both elements of your items are included in the municipal code review that we're going to be talking about in the issues and options. No?
No. Madam Chair, the scope of the zoning code update is simply to look at process. You know, we're not going to be developing new historic guidelines or an ordinance or a program related to it. It is on our longer-term work program. It's unfunded, though. I would anticipate that it would rise to the top of our list of priorities once we get the zoning code and climate action plan and LCP done. But we also share your concerns and recognize the problems that it creates.
It's definitely, when I was reading the issues, I definitely read it in the issues packet that we got, so I was hoping that we'd get there. Tough to do a process if you can't figure out...
Yeah. I think what we aim to do is codify the process that we use right now that isn't codified anywhere. So at least there's a procedure, and people can look to a code and understand what it is that we do, as imperfect as it may be. And then, longer term, I think we want to develop some kind of program that fits Capitola better, so we don't have to rely on federal standards.
Well, with those comments, neither one of you want to pull it, so I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Moved by Commissioner Ortiz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Welsh. All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, so we don't need a roll call vote. Public hearings. The public hearings are intended... Sorry?
We pulled that item with that motion. Don't we need...
We didn't pull it.
Oh, we didn't pull it?
We did not pull it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the motion then, because that's the way I thought it was being addressed. I'd like to record then a no on one of the two ordinances in the first item on the consent agenda, and I'd also... So that'd be a no on that one, and a no on 113, because I agree with TJ, which is that I think the Secretary of State's historic standards do not fit well for Capitola. In fact, it makes historic structures look as something like a zoo after they're built. I'm sorry. And so I'd vote no on both of those. I think it's interesting that 113 Oakland went up and talked to the neighbors about it and the rest of it. It used to have the garage, you know, it's getting it back and that kind of stuff. It's just the idea that the new part, that the alteration to the rear of the building, they have to make different from a historic building, doesn't sit well with me, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
So please record two noes for that.
Shall I restate the votes?
Yes.
Consent calendar, item A, yes, Commissioner Welsh, Smith, Ortiz, and Newman, no, Commissioner Graves. Item B, yes, Commissioners Welsh, Ortiz, Newman, and Chairperson Smith, no, Commissioner Graves. Item C, unanimously approved.
Yes, I think that's accurate. Thank you. Now we'll move to the public hearings. Public hearings are intended to provide an opportunity for public discussion of each item listed in the agenda. We will first have a staff presentation, then we'll have public discussion, and members of the public are invited to speak if they would like to. Once the public has spoken, the planning commissioners will then discuss the item and make any comments or questions of the applicants. We'll close the public portion of the hearing at that point, and the planning commissioners will discuss and arrive at a decision. Just a couple of things. Please keep the comments from the public directed at us and not within the public, and we will try and give you as much time as you need, but if we start running over, we'll institute and start enforcing the three-minute limit that we have for public comments. So with that, number 231 Esplanade, staff report, please.
Okay, thank you. This application is for a signed permit for the Margaritaville restaurant at 231 Esplanade. Margaritaville was recently purchased by a new owner, Mrs. Orr, who is available this evening for any questions. Margaritaville is requesting two new wall signs and two new menu signs. They're in the process of an extensive interior remodel, which does not require the planning commission review. This is an image of the existing wall sign above Margaritaville. The applicant would like to remove this existing wall sign. And on the right, you'll see the sign they would like to install. It's a more simple black aluminum lettering that is illuminated through backlighting. The existing menu board sign on the door will also be removed. The image on the right shows the illumination of the sign at night, the light sources within each letter. The letters are located approximately two inches off the wall, creating an 18-inch halo that backlight the wall. Shawn Adams of Monterey Signs is here this evening if you have questions about that, and has also brought a sample to show you. This is the entrance near the corner of Stockton and Esplanade. Again, the applicant would like to remove the wall sign to the right of the door and add a new sign above the entrance on a raceway that matches the exterior of the building. The applicant would also like to update the existing menu board signs on the site. There are two existing menu boards, one at each entrance. The owner would like to install a clear LED illuminated menu sign at each entrance. Neither sign will exceed two square feet. The menu sign will be installed to the right of each entrance, as shown with the arrows. Staff is recommending approval of the application 15-013, subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there members of the public that would...
Can I get questions from staff?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
It's all right, yes.
I do have a couple of questions. Is the Margaritaville sign that's in the center of the building to remain?
Yes.
That's going to remain?
With the parrot.
Uh-huh, yeah. And then, you were talking about it being a raceway, that soffit or whatever, the facing. Is that going to then return all the way to the building? Will that be sort of, look like a box? Can you go back to that diagram? So, can you... There was a diagram of before... There we go. So it looks to me as though all of the dark wood will not show. Is that going to return back in, or is that just going to be put on the face?
I'll need to ask the applicant for...
Okay, we can ask him during that time. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions?
I have one question. In the drawing that's... The rendering on the board, I can remember when the original Margaritaville sign came before us, the part that you see in blue below it was a requirement of ADA with regards to blind people, but it was never constructed. And I'm wondering, is there a proposal to construct that in as much as they're keeping the sign? The reason for the ADA requirement that was brought to us at that time was that non-sighted people can't feel a sign that's located that high up and could hit it with their head or face, and therefore, there must be something to keep them away from the wall, and so that bottom section needed to be there. And it never was installed. And you can go back and check the records, because that's clear as a bell.
Ron, is it the blue?
The blue was actually, just like the sign, it was extended from the building to be the same distance from the wall as the sign, so that a person with a cane would hit that and keep themselves from walking into the sign. That's the way it was explained to us the night of the approval, and it was approved in that fashion.
So I think by removing the existing Margaritaville sign, then that hazard of bumping into the sign will be removed, and the new sign, because it's above the entryway, will no longer be a hazard.
Okay. Then did I hear the answer to Ms. Ortiz's question incorrectly? The sign is going away, or...
Oh, so for the Margaritaville sign above the door, there's a raceway behind it?
I took it to be the one that's right there on the left side.
So the new sign is on the right-hand side, the sign on the left?
I understand that. So I thought Gail's question, and I may be wrong, Gail can ask her own question, but I thought I heard you say that with the pointer, point to the sign that's in white and black over to the left, right there, that one. I thought she asked whether that was being retained, and I thought the answer was yes.
I believe Ms. Ortiz's question was, there's a raceway behind the new Margaritaville sign?
I heard that part of it.
And she was asking if it would... And she was asking if it would...
It's the sign in the center of the building between the two doors.
Oh, okay, that's the one you were asking about. Okay. So this sign here that I was mentioning is going away?
It is.
Thank you. No need to worry about ADA.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff from the commission? We had one question of the applicant, so if the applicant is here, if we could get that question answered first, that would be really nice. Yeah, please approach the podium and speak into the mic so the people at home can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Orr, and I am the new owner of Margaritaville effective January 9th, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for me about the sign.
Welcome to Capitola.
Thank you. I grew up in Aptos, and I'm really, really excited to have this opportunity.
So when we see the facade, I'm referencing your new sign, I can see that there will be a wood, a painted wood facade that the sign will go on, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
It's not stucco, it's wood?
Correct.
Will that return back to the building? What will we see as people are walking up and down the sidewalk from both directions? What will they see on the side of that overhang?
My understanding, and I want to confirm with Sean, who's producing the sign, is what will be on the right, on the sides, when you're walking by, is exactly what it currently is, which is wood, as opposed to this raceway?
Okay.
Is that what... We're not wrapping it?
So it'll be the dark wood?
Exactly. And all of that we're painting to make it look really fresh and new. So to answer your question, the facade that you see in the front wouldn't wrap back, it would just be to support the sign.
And typically, when you have that type of signage, you would have something in back of it so that the mechanics of it, the guts, don't show. Can you talk about, because I would imagine that you might be able to see that from either the side or as you go under it through the door, if it's just kind of hanging there? What are they going to be?
Let me get Sean.
Sounds like a question for Sean.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. Do you want to come up here? Because I don't want to see the guts of it, to answer your question.
Yeah, right.
Not after spending all that money on the interior. Good evening, I'm Sean Adams, the owner of Monterey Signs, Santa Cruz Signs, and it's a great project on this particular sign, which is the upslope sign, the secondary entrance. We were forced to put it on a raceway to achieve that halo effect. So the halo is indirect lighting that shines the building behind the letters, instead of illuminating the letter face itself. So we needed something behind the letters, and the existing wooden structure of that awning wasn't enough to do it. So we built, we would propose to build a, what's called a raceway, and it would be painted to match the adobe exterior of the restaurant, of the whole building, really. And it would return back to the building and anchor right into the building itself.
Awesome.
But it'd be very low-profile, four inches deep is the depth of the raceway, and it would be designed to be inconspicuous. We don't want it to stand out, we don't, you're not going to see any switches, or hardware, or clunky fasteners. We want it to be low-profile and sleek.
So is the raceway actually a box, a four-inch box that has a back on it, and so inside of that box will be all of the...
Yes, all, exactly. All the wiring will be contained within the box.
Right.
Sealed tight to prevent weather corrosion of the electric parts.
And so I just want to clarify, I think it does wrap all the way around and go all the way back to the building?
It's a four-inch-deep cabinet, and then there is extensions that go back to the wall itself to provide welded extensions, like you could say, I lost for the word for it, it's like a bracket, basically. It's a welded aluminum bracket that mounts back to the building, and the depth of that bracket is, I think, about two feet.
And is that bracket going to be seen by people walking both ways on the street?
Right, but it'll be painted to match the adobe exterior, so...
I guess since we don't have a side view of this, it's kind of hard to know what that's going to look like. This is a really high-profile building, a high-profile area, and we want to make sure that it, you know, it looks good. And I'm also wanting to see the other door, if you would, just so that, because those two doors now, I think they match one another, and I'm hearing that they may not. Well, I guess they don't match one another now, so that's moot. Okay, so you've got that, and you've got that. All right.
Right. So the secondary entrance was a little more difficult for us, because the primary entrance, near Mr. Toots, was pretty straightforward. It's flush against the building, very straightforward. The exact same lettering is on the upper entrance here, the secondary entrance, and exact same size, same height, same width, everything about it. But we wanted to bring it above the entrance to mark the entrance to the building, instead of off to the side. And when you have light signage off to the side and down like it currently is, it just invites vandalism, invites trouble. So I think a more ideal location was to put it directly above the entrance, just like the primary entrance.
So what we'll see from the side is the wood, of the existing wood that I am thinking is dark at this point, it must be dark as it is up on the face.
Right.
And then, on top of that, we'll see a metal piece that will be painted light to match the building?
Right. Exactly right, yeah. There'll be a short...
I was kind of wondering what that's going to look like. I just don't, I think that's going to look, I don't know what it'll look like, frankly. You know, I think that's a big part of it, and we don't know.
I understand, and one thought that I'm having, kind of discussing this, is that if it goes up and it looks too industrial, because that's not consistent with the look that we're trying to achieve at the restaurant anywhere in it, we could easily build wood structure to cover that, so that it looks exactly the same all around, and is it painted the same all around. For me aesthetically, that'd be much more pleasing.
I think so.
And easy to achieve.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Don't let him get away, because I want to see if I understand, so that maybe you get some outcome out of this tonight.
Great.
The raceway that's behind the sign on the right there, which I understand the purpose of it, instead of taking the raceway and continuing it back to the building wall itself on both sides, you're going to take a single piece of metal that's colored the same as the raceway and bring it back as a bracket.
Right.
Will it be the same width or height as the raceway? Because to me, it seems, I'm really concerned with what I heard happen here, that the brown below the shingles is going to stay, but on top of that, we're going to have a metal band that is basically like a shelf bracket that goes back to the building to hold the raceway up and the rest of it. And that, to me, seems really industrial, and I don't think that's what your client wants. But clear me up, am I right? Which one am I right with it? Is it going to look like a piece of metal going back that's painted on top of the dark brown wood that you see there now below the shingles? Or is it going to be the raceway continued back to the building on both sides?
Yeah, we would, it would be a tubular aluminum bracket painted to attach...
I'm not seeing where, I got the picture, okay.
But if you would like to attach a condition of approval, that we do something different, we would be welcome to that. This is a custom sign, so you could have it really any way you like it.
Any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, I have one. I think I heard Katie say you had a sample that you brought with us for us to see. I would love to see it.
There is, I can light it up if you want. This is a... Would you like me to come closer?
From there is fine, I think.
This is a, if you're familiar with the Zeldas and Britannia Arms, they have the exact same letter.
Okay.
It's a fabricated metal letter with LED lights on the inside, so the letter itself isn't illuminated, but there's a series of LED lights behind it that produce a soft LED glow behind the letter. So currently, you're looking at brown on black, so at night, you'd have a nice white glow behind the letter that gives the letter contrast and readability at night. It's very classy. This is the direction most municipalities want to go with their signage. You currently have it at two locations downtown.
Great. Thank you.
I brought this letter just in case you wanted, there was concern about it being too bright. I can show you. It's very minimal. The glow, this is right in the media area.
Is it easy to turn it on?
Sure.
And is this the kind of sign that you can adjust the lumens in it?
No, it's on.
Okay. Thank you.
Please do turn it on if that's an easy thing to do, let's see it.
See a power strip right here.
I appreciate looking at the side of it now, it's much more clear what it's going Very nice.
Not overwhelming?
No.
Looks wonderful.
And not ugly from the side. No, very nice. Thank you very much for bringing that.
Gone, no S's in Margaritaville.
That's what I said.
Let's see, I wonder where that escaped from. Are there any other questions for the applicants? Seeing none, is there any other member of the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, thank you very much, and we'll close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner comments?
I think I would like to see a condition as long as they're willing to do it. I think it'll look a lot better. I think that they're going to be happier with it, too, that that raceway goes straight back to the wall and attached to the wall in some way, hiding that metal bracket that secures it. And other than that, I am for this. I think it will upgrade the building and do something very good. I still like the mermaid, though.
Was that made in the form of a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve this application with the additional condition that, what I mentioned, I don't need to mention it again.
Second.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Ortiz, seconded by Commissioner Graves. All in favor?
Discussion, please.
Discussion.
So I think you flushed out a really good point here, especially in that location, but I'm not, I mean, do we have enough direction in this motion in terms of what the solution is going to be? It's just some kind of apron, wood apron, over the bracket? So... Okay. They feel it. It seems like there's cooperation here, so there's...
But a finished look, so it looks like it belongs to the building?
Yeah.
Okay. And the final drawings will go to community development before it gets approved, so I think we're all on the same page with what we want.
One more question, those gooseneck lights that are over the two existing sides are going away, too. Thank you. I don't know what they would be there for afterwards, but...
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, unanimous approval.
Welcome. Good luck. Good luck, we're waiting for you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, our next item tonight is 4200 Auto Plaza Drive, a sign permit application for one additional internally illuminated wall sign at the Toyota Car Dealership. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Toyota dealership located at 4200 Auto Plaza Drive is requesting an amendment to their master sign permit to add one wall sign. The Toyota dealership is located in the Community Commercial District. This image shows the west elevation of the building. Currently, there are no signs on the west elevation. Toyota is requesting one Toyota sign be added centrally, and be centrally located on the top third of the building. The sign is approximately four feet tall by 26 feet wide. The red vinyl logo and lettering will be internally illuminated with the same materials and lumens utilized to illuminate the signs on the front of the building. Chris Merrill of Northwest Signs, I believe, is here tonight, and he had stated in a recent email to me that the lumens per foot are 27 lumens per foot. This is a picture of the site currently and the facade that we are discussing. The star shows the future location proposed on the wall for the sign. The Master Sign Program was originally reviewed during the March 7th, 2013 Planning Commission. On February 6th, 2014, the Planning Commission reviewed a modification to the plans, including slight modifications to the original master sign plan. And the signs you see in front of you were approved during the more recent review. There are two directional signs on the site. One is for customer parking and used vehicles. The other is directing where services can be done in the customer parking. These plans were not in either of the Planning Commission packets previously. I didn't make the connection that these two signs had not previously been reviewed by the Planning Commission until after the packet went out. So I would like you to consider these tonight with this application. I'm sorry for the last-minute inclusion in the presentation, but I think it is important that the whole master sign plan be approved with all signs that are on site. And they were included in the building plans, and I did not catch it, so there's a staff error as well. So they have been installed. And I should mention that the signs are approximately five feet high by four feet wide, and some of that space is held, is taken up by the base. So the sign on the right is about 16 square feet, and the sign on the left is about 20 square feet, the actual face. So they're not as big as the Toyota Monument sign that was approved within the Master Sign Program. Staff recommends approval of the application 1520 with the addition of the two-directional signs, subject to conditions and findings in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions of staff?
So the current building is coming down, right?
It is.
Yeah. And that will become the lot.
Mm-hmm.
That will become the lot.
That is one of my quotes.
Right, well, I was just trying to figure out, you know, I didn't recall that, having it been two years ago, whether they were going to take down the current building. It didn't make a lot of sense to put a sign up on that side with the building there, so just so I know that.
Well, I find it ironic that we are going through this process for signs in an area that nobody sees unless they're going to have their car serviced or buy a car.
You will be able to see it, though.
Yeah, and in contrast, we have all over the city these sandwich boards and these people walking around with clothing signs and balloons and, you know, that are right in the middle of what everyone sees coming to Capitola. Let me spend our time on this Toyota directional sign.
Any other questions? Is there a question there?
I don't know if there was a question.
Is this the same size as the sign on the front of the building? The new one, the current one, the one that's on there? Is this, we can ask the applicant.
If you could, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
No, just for the applicant.
Is the applicant here this evening? Please come to the podium, we have questions.
To begin with, I couldn't tell you if it's a...
Please speak into the mic so they can hear you at home. Thank you.
My name's Gary Shipman, I'm with Toyota Santa Cruz. Unfortunately, Chris was unable to make it tonight with Northwest Signs, nor were any of his colleagues, due to something that came up within the business. But the sign, from the standpoint of size, height-wise, is the same length. It's a little different because of the construction in the front of the building, the way that the Toyota emblem and the Toyota is with the wrap. But yes, it is about the same size, yeah, and it's using the same lighting. It's red LED lighting, and we'd just like to get visibility from the west side that looks out to the commercial area, just for some identification.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, can we put up the proposed location of the new wall sign?
And I would like to add, last night I drove down Derby to make sure that I couldn't see Toyota, and you cannot see Toyota from the end of Derby.
No. I agree with that. And I know you don't have probably the answer to this question. The location of this wall sign, when I was out there, I'll be honest with you, until this graphic came up, even though I have plans here, didn't realize that the sign is bigger than the rectangle that it's in. You see the facade... You see the facade of the building. You notice the, what I would call the two perpendicular lines going through the A and through your logo. And one other thing, this sign can be seen off-site, not where was mentioned by staff. And I was wondering if there was any thought on your, on the owner of the business and stuff, of possibly moving that sign approximately the width of the sign down into the next box lower. If I had, no, go up to the top up there. Go up to the top. Right where it says Toyota all by itself, right up at the top. Moving that down one box, right there. If you look at the side of the building on that side, that's pretty much what the side of the building is. And that would, our fear has always been that we're showing these dealerships from the freeway, and we had an ordinance against it, and being that high, it does show. I went out and looked today twice just to make sure. And I'm not, I want you to know and take this back to Toyota and the owner of the Toyota franchise.
I am one of the owners.
Okay, the franchise. I think the building is beautiful. I really like what you did. I'm happy to hear that the old building will eventually come down. I think you did a marvelous thing out there, so I'm here to try and help you with approval of this sign. I really mean that. I think in this economy and the rest of it, this isn't a bad alternative. Having said that, that side of the building houses another vehicle that you advertised, the Scion, I believe it is. Am I right?
That side of the building, from the front, from the facing?
Yes. I found it strange that it was like the stepchild that had no signage at all, I'm sorry. And yet Toyota was going to be wrapped around on, you know, three sides almost, you know?
Well, Scion is somewhat of a stepchild to Toyota.
I understand that.
It was introduced originally to get a younger demographic interested in Toyota product. It will never be of the production that Toyota has, quite candidly. It's always going to remain secondary. However, there is some desire for that type of vehicle, in particular by certain clientele.
Well, you know what sells. It just stuck out to me when I was out there. And I want to thank you. I don't really have any other questions. Do you have any comment about moving the...
Well, you know, we did consider that. However, with the investment that we've made in that building, the fact that it does face west, which is totally commercial, up until 41st Avenue, and then again, another full block past that, we didn't think that it would be obtrusive to anyone from that standpoint. And it would give us some identification, rather than just a white building with a partial Toyota sign. From the freeway, you can see it from the entrance, the on-ramp or the off-ramp, but you can't see it from the freeway. It's just, you know, we're just too far back, and the way Caltrans has it right now, it's very difficult to identify. And we do rely on drive-by traffic.
Thank you.
Any other questions for... Okay, seeing none, I have one question, just for clarification. The way that the building sticks out, is the sign actually going to hang out off the edges of that?
No, it's flush to the building, yeah. It's flush. It's only about, the lettering is about possibly two inches. It's right there. It's LED, it's red LED lettering.
No, I mean, the building sticks out for this wide, is the sign going to be completely contained within that width, or is it going to hang off of the edges?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's within the building. Oh, no, absolutely, yeah, yeah. No, there's no hanging. That building's a large building, a very large building.
Yeah, the vertical lines on the drawing are what are confusing me.
Basically, it was a tilt-up construction, and that's where some of the ribbon is. You know, it does show on that, but if you were to walk up to it, and I believe Katie's looked at it fairly closely, it's very difficult to see that because they are filled. You know, they're not totally smooth, but they are filled.
Okay, understand, understand. Thank you.
Okay.
So it will fit into that part that sticks up from the rest of the building? It just looks to me as though the building has a step up in the center. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
Are you talking, you're looking, I think what you're looking at is the old building that is currently, they're very close to one another right now. Oh, that there, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, it does. That, yeah. And we would like it on that secondary, the portion that's higher, for visibility purposes, because you can't actually even see the front of that.
And it will be confined within that. It doesn't hang over the two edges.
It does not hang over, no, it does not hang over.
Get it said another way, to make sure.
It does not hang over, I assure you of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, then we'll close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the commission. Comments from the commissioners?
I'm going to approve it tonight. Do want to alert the commission and those in the audience and those at home. Under final comments at this meeting, I tend to address some other signage in the same area, being the auto row. So I want you all to know that. And it really bothers me, so I'll tell you that right now. But I think this is a welcome addition.
I'll move approval with the conditions as stated.
Second.
I have comments. I know, I don't know whether any other commissioners noticed, but there's been a tree taken down on the freeway, which was extremely advantageous to Toyota. I don't think it had anything to do with you guys. I don't think you went out in the middle of the night and hacked it down or anything, but it was very advantageous, and it does, to me, really illuminate your new building. Your building has incredible coverage now because of that. And I'm just, I'm kind of a little concerned about down the road with other aging auto dealers who are going to want to step up their lighting as well and their signage as well, that that center, that whole block is going to begin to levitate its glowing so much in the future. So I think we need to be careful when we add and we continue to layer these signs. The other concern I have is that frequently, I know that it's hard when you're doing a business to really see everything, but I see frequently people come back and ask for more signage. And I'm not sure all the time whether it's just it was a lack of seeing it to begin with, or if it's this phasing of trying to get more and more because they don't think they're going to get it in the beginning, and so they add, you know, target. I think it's been done several times. I think we need to be very, very aware of that. You know, I also believe, I agree with Commissioner Graves, when you look at the current west-facing Toyota sign on the old building, it is, you can see it from quite a ways, all kinds of different places. This one's going to be higher than that, as far as I know. So you're going to see it even more. So I'm not saying I would be against it, but I am saying that I think we need to be aware that if we're giving this to these guys, I think we need to actually, you know, maybe in the ordinance amendments, have some kind of signage rules for this area so that we don't get this layering. And because they're all going to start aging out, they're all going to start wanting new buildings. And signs are getting better. They're getting brighter, and they're, you know, they're just getting better. So I would love to see that maybe covered in the ordinance. The other thing I would like to see as a condition for this is for them to take, unless they have a banner permit, they have a banner on, I believe, a city-owned or a Caltrans-owned fence on 41st Avenue? I don't, do you know anything about that?
There's no permit for that.
Is that our fence, or is that Caltrans?
Caltrans.
I think it's Caltrans.
It's Caltrans. I would like to add a condition of approval that they remove that.
I just have one, and I share the concern about consistency that Commissioner Ortiz does. But I also would like to acknowledge that Toyota's been a great to work with for our neighboring, the mobile home park behind their complex and stuff, and I'm all for them making more sales and more revenue for the city. So I think the advertisement is great, and it's within our codes, but I certainly understand the concern about consistency with our signage. So, but I don't have a problem with them. I move to approve it as well, so.
Okay. I have one clarification question for staff. In order for the two directional signs that have already been installed, I guess, to be included, do we need to add a condition for that, or is it, since they were in the plans that we were reviewing this time, is it already covered? I just want to make sure that they do get included in this one.
Madam Chair, I think it's already covered. Building plans have been stamped. So really, you're endorsing a previous decision that staff has made, I think, by approving it tonight.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, yes, sir?
Yeah, and I'm fine with what I will consider an amendment, that the other sign be removed as a condition, because I think that is a good idea. Whoever seconded it will accept that. I think DJ.
My second will accept that.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Newman, and it's seconded by Commissioner Graves. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on, Madam Chairman, to the next item, because we're in the auto row, and we're talking about signage, and so the one audience member out there doesn't have to wait to the end of the meeting, I'd like to ask a few questions of staff. I was really concerned when I went out and looked at this application. We have light standards along the road there, and poles have been added to them with what I call pageant signs on top of the poles. So they extend the poles almost 21 feet up, by my just guesstimate. Maybe they're not that big. Maybe they're 10 to 12 feet up. Plus, almost every light standard has advertisement on it. And my understanding of the type of advertisement that's on those poles, it requires a permit here with the city of Capitola, and also has a timeframe for which they can be put up there. Are there permits, and did somebody in the city give that many permits for that many signs? I think I counted 12 to 14 signs before you get to Toyota, this old building there, along the fence, light standards, and also the interior of that Auto Plaza Drive, light standards, which to me, it looks like a junk shop. And I just wanted to call that out while here. And I just leave that as a question. You can answer it later. You don't have to answer it tonight. But if there are no permits, I'd like to see a letter go out that they would be removed. I wonder if there's any feeling on, this is a new planning commission, brand new, and this is a departure from where I've been in the past on issues out there with regards to auto row. And I was wondering if any of you would consider a monument sign at the entrance. It would not be seen from the, well, it would be seen from the freeway overpass, but not, it would be basically in front of Kia there somewhere that would enumerate the dealers that are there, and I think it would help them a lot. And I don't know if they even want to do this, but it was an idea that was kiboshed years ago, and I'd like to renew it because I think it's what we really need to do.
Yeah, I agree.
So am I hearing a proposal from the Planning Commission that we look at it?
Well, we don't initiate a sign.
No, I'm not trying to initiate, I'm not trying to initiate a sign or design a sign. I'm trying to say to staff, they have more communication with the dealers out there than any of us do, to look at if there's any desire still on the part of the dealers, pull them together, and would we consider something if it came before us? Because I'm ready to be the one that said I voted against it originally, and I'd like to look at it now. I don't know what the sign's going to look like, so I don't know how I'm going to vote, but I'd like to look at one.
Are there any commissioners that don't want to consider it?
I think it would give a nice entry, a nice feeling that it's a district or it's an area that people want to go into. Right now, it's hard to get...
Can I address that a little bit?
Sure.
Please come to the microphone.
I didn't mean to extend this, but you're referring to the Subaru Mazda Kia operation that's currently there. We are also the owners of that. Auto Row is primarily owned by us, in all intents and purposes, not necessarily all of the properties, but certainly the franchises. We do have a desire to do exactly what you have just described down the road. In the very near future, you will see application, you referred to the signage on Subaru around the bend, okay? You will see application by Subaru for new signage and some remodel. The manufacturer has mandated that we upgrade that store to some degree. We will be separating the Mazda and Subaru franchises, and more than likely, Mazda will move into where the Kia showroom is currently. The service will remain the same. They will be under one roof because there just isn't room, quite candidly, out there. But it will be upgraded. There will be applications. I mean, it's not just going to be done, but that is in the works. There has been discussion internally with regards to putting some sort of a monument sign up at the entrance and seeing if we could get approval. At one time, it's my understanding when that was initially developed, that that was on an agenda, but as you said, it did not come to fruition.
It got shut down.
Yeah. So there will be opportunity there. From the standpoint of the banner, I'll make sure that that's gone tomorrow.
It's not a banner. It's like 14 or 15.
Yeah, no, no, no. And candidly, I've got to take some of the responsibility on that. My staff came to me and said, you know, with construction, they're not even going to think we're open. And it was just a way of making sure that people understood that we weren't closing down Santa Cruz. The building was coming up contiguous to the old building, which will be demolished. And so if there's arrows, it's at me, okay?
Anything you can do, I'll thank you now.
We'll handle that. But yeah, in the very near future, the Subaru franchise will have application into the city, okay?
So as long as you're up there, and you just told us that you were the dealer for the Kia, I have a question about Kia.
Well, I'm one of the owners. I'm not the dealer, but go ahead.
Okay, all right. You might know the answer to this, and I might be wrong. Is there a new sign south-facing that says "Used" and something or other cars? Is that a new sign on the Kia building? I don't remember approving that as part of Kia. It's the one south-facing, and it says "Used" and something or other cars.
Just cars.
And it directs them to the back lot, but I don't know if there was a permit for that or not.
Candidly, I cannot answer that question. I would be guessing.
Maybe staff could answer that for me. Thank you.
I do know that all the Kia signage in the front, you know, digs through all the proper...
Yes, I was on the, yes, I remember that. I do remember that.
But that will be changed.
It looks very good. I just don't think we approved that one on the side.
So Steph's got the direction to check it.
We're catching you guys, sorry.
That's fine, no, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we had a motion, we processed it already. So we're done?
Yeah, sorry.
I lost track of all that, just let you know. Okay, moving to our last public hearing this evening, 4850 Opal Street. It's a design permit for a rear addition to an existing single-family residence.
No.
Oh.
Turn the page.
So sorry.
Turn to the bottom of the page.
Sorry, sorry.
Gee, you got me all shook up.
I'm sorry.
Glad to know somebody else does that.
I'm really sorry.
Zoning update, issues and options white paper. Preliminary consideration of a comprehensive update to Title 17 zoning of the City of Capitola's municipal code. Staff report, please.
Okay, thank you. You all on Monday should have received your new issues and options document. And tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of the process to date, and then how to utilize this document during future meetings. Tonight, we're not discussing, as outlined in the staff report, we won't be discussing the issues and options in here, but giving an overview of the documents to move forward. We last discussed the zoning code update during our November Planning Commission meeting. At the November meeting, we gave you the results of the public outreach efforts to date. We provided you with copies of action minutes from our stakeholder interviews and the findings of the public survey, which was taken by 150 members of the public. We've been busy since the November meeting. We've been organizing all the input that was received from the public, the stakeholders, and the planning commissioners to create the issues and options report which you've received. The first step was to take all the issues identified by the public and the stakeholders and put them into a spreadsheet. So when you open your issues and options, there's the issue and options paper comes first, and then there's a tab. And behind that tab is a spreadsheet with blue on top. And behind that tab is a spreadsheet with blue on top. This spreadsheet includes, is the master list of all identified zoning issues within the current code. It is set up that the first column identifies the subject, and similar subjects are grouped together in this, to ensure that all issues for each subject are addressed. The second column contains an explanation of the issue. The comments in this column are expressions, are explanations that we received during the public outreach. As you go through these, you will realize there are many different perspectives that will come across in these. Know that they're members, they're the perspectives of the public, of stakeholders, of previous staff and current staff, so. The third column is how will the issues be addressed? For the more straightforward technical issues and clarifications, we list how the specific issue will be addressed. For instance, the fourth line item states that specific fee references do not belong in the code. Under how the issue will be addressed, we have input, delete all specific fee references, and then relate to the fee schedule. The more complex issues will make up the bulk of the issues and options report. Within the spreadsheet, the third, I'm sorry. There you go. Within the spreadsheet, the third column references the issues and options whenever one of the larger issues and options is related, and then you can go back to the issues and options document for the full breakdown of the issues and options. So now we'll go to the issues and options paper at the front of you. Working from the master list, we divided the issues and options report into two sections. The first section is the non-controversial issues. The non-controversial issues include issues such as the formatting and updating definitions. An overview is provided in the report in Section A of the report, and specific examples are within the spreadsheet that I just went over. The second section is the items for public discussion. This is the bulk of your issues and options report. These are the larger issues that we'll be requesting recommendations from you on how you would like to see each of the issues resolved. These items will include larger items such as historic preservation and mixed-use parking standards. And now, if you could go to Page 3 of your issues and options report. On this page, we have identified 18 issues, the 18 issues in need of public discussion. You can reference this page of the document as a table of contents. For instance, if you would like to review the plan development issue, you could simply go to Page 30 and see that plan developments are discussed on Page 30. When you review the individual issues, so here's an example of an individual issue, the plan developments, Issue 13. So when you review the individual issues, the issues are typically introduced with an overview, followed by stakeholder or public perception on the issue, and if applicable, the general plan policies and action items that are related to that issue. Next, the options are provided. The first option is always to maintain the existing regulation. Next, a variety of options to address the issue are listed. I should note that we don't think the list is all-inclusive. During this process, we hope to hear more ideas from the Planning Commission and from the public that can be considered as options for the future, and also any edits to options that are in there as well. The issues and options paper is much is a starting point for conversations, is how we look at it. In some instances, it'll be appropriate to choose one option. In other instances, such as historic preservation, when you're talking about different options that can be incorporated, you'll be choosing multiple options if desired. And one other item to add is that often we include examples from other jurisdictions. This is just to help you to see how it's been utilized in another place. We've heard a lot of success stories about historic preservation in Monterey and Los Gatos within the document. You'll be able to click on the electronic document and go to their actual ordinance and see how they have it set up. The last document in your folder is in the pouch. And this document is more of a working document. It lists the issues. On the top line, it'll list the issues. Then all the options are below. And this is a document that, as you're going through issues and options, it's for you to mark up. So those issues, those options that you like, you can make reference to with checkmarks or a star. You can feel free to go through this and make revisions to the issues and handwrite them on here. You're welcome to, in the notes section, place your notes, your thoughts about the issue, or any other options that you think we should be considering. And if you think an option doesn't belong, or isn't acceptable, or should be practiced in the City of Capitola, then note that as well. So this is for you. We're not going to collect it from you at any point. It's just for you to utilize and update as a tool. If you don't choose to use it, we'll never know. So right now, in the process, we're at the juncture of the Planning Commission and City Council workshops in the near future. And as we're working on the workshops and getting your direction for the issues and options, we're going to work with the Planning Commission first and take your recommendations to City Council. As that's going on, we'll also be working with Ben Noble of Placeworks and Ben Noble Planning. And he'll be drafting the preliminary zoning ordinance based on the direction you provide during those meetings. And the really small items that can be fixed now, he's already started working on, so the clarifications and smaller issues. This week, in an email I sent out, we talked about, I introduced two options. Originally, we thought we would review a few options, issues and options at each Planning Commission meeting. Then the idea came up to host a few, a couple full-day workshops in which Ben could actually come down and spend the entire day with us. We were thinking probably two full days would be enough time to get through all of these issues and really be focused. So I'd love to hear your feedback on that. And just quickly, the next steps. After that step is complete of getting direction, Ben will be drafting the final zoning ordinance in the SEQA document. There'll be an adoption hearing by the City Council. And then the Coastal Commission will start their review process of the LCP. So thank you for your time, and any questions or comments, we'd love to hear. Thank you.
Questions? Ron?
Yeah. I hear you wanted to hear from us on the 13 items, whether we'd like to take them with the consultant in a two-day period, or take some of them at each Planning Commission meeting. And I have no problem with either one, but I do have a problem, now having gone through the general plan, and Ed was the chairperson of that, but so many things got done in the work sessions, and then they got changed after they got to Jamie and City Hall, that were not part of the work sessions, but they were kind of put in. And I think what we're all forgetting is that the general plan is a 20-year document. It's not something that has to be done tomorrow. And hopefully, the zoning ordinance is what really carries the actions of the general plan out, but over a period of time. Because I think we could make such stringent zoning ordinances that we want to change everything right away, and that's not a good idea. We'd probably never get through the process. Having said that, there's a couple of things that concern me. One was the idea that I personally and the community need to run to Sonoma or somebody else's website to see what they did with regards to certain issues. You know, the footnotes at the end of the, each one of the 13, or at least the first ones that I've read. I've only read about, you know, a quarter of the document so far. I don't like that personally. If you could give a small synopsis of what the website does with regards to those issues, I'd prefer that. I don't read well online. Not that I can't read online, but it's not good for my eyes, and you spend more time hunting for what you're looking for. The other thing I'd like to say to you, I only got to Page 7 of the document, reading every word, and spell check doesn't work anymore, folks. We got words in there that don't apply. On Page 7, the one that got me, you were looking for the word "one" O-N-E, and we got "once." And it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything in the sentence. And there's quite a few, as I kept going, there was quite a few. The final one that I'll comment on is Number 13, I believe, the last one with regards to the appeal process to the City Council. Rather than take a court case that happened in Southern California, and I'm not an attorney like Ed Newman is, and read the case and make sure it applies here, I would like to see a synopsis from our attorney that we pay good money from. I think that would be more important. Those are my comments.
My comment on the process was, we only meet once a month, and if we were going to, there's 18 issues.
Yeah.
I didn't see how we were going to fit within your timeline.
Yeah.
If we did them at the meetings, the Planning Commission meetings.
Yeah, Commissioner Newman, we shared the same concerns. You know, early on, we talked about potentially having a second meeting a month to get through it. And then it really occurred to us, you know, if you have 18 issues, and you get two or three done a meeting, which is probably ambitious for some of them, you know, we're stretching this out over, well, over a year. And so the thought really came to us that maybe it's better to focus a couple of days rather than several nights and stretching it out, and then going through the City Council process. So I think our recommendation would be to try to concentrate, but then again, we do appreciate the fact that a lot of people's schedules are busy, and so we do want to appreciate that, and find something that works for everyone, but is still efficient to move through the process.
You know, it's not so much about schedules for me. And I do agree, I don't know how we'd ever get it done if we took, you know, we'd have to take more than two or three probably to get it done in a good amount of time. But for me, you know, this is not my business. So I have to say that when we're concentrating this much on this kind of thing, I'm better in small chunks rather. I get, I get brain fatigue after a while, you know, talking about these super important things for our community, and it's 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and we've already gone through signage, and we've gone through historic preservation, and now we're talking about, you know, building height or whatever, you know, it's, there comes a point where, when it's not your career, and it's not your language, and whatever, we're, I think we're all going to just kind of go, because it's important stuff, and it's needy stuff. And so I don't know what the answer is. But I, I think if we were going to do it outside of Planning Commission meetings, maybe having three of them, spreading it over three, or instead of two, or not having it full day.
We could go back to having a second Planning Commission meeting that didn't deal with action items, but only dealt with this, and it would be more palatable to me personally. I think that she's right, that if you take too many of them, by 3 o'clock in the afternoon, we're all going to be rummy.
Well, my thoughts originally was that to have a focused time in the two days would seem better for me. So I'm just focused on the issues at hand, but I certainly understand what you're saying, and would be open to other alternatives that I think we just focused on having to deal with these issues and not going through action items, and then have to switch gears and try to move forward. So either way, whether we add a second night or just do it in day segments, I would prefer.
You know, one option might be that we could schedule earlier Planning Commission meetings, the second meeting of the month, a special meeting, maybe start at 5 or 6, or whatever folks decide on, stretch it out for three or four hours, so it's maybe a half-day event. That still should reduce the number of meetings we have to have significantly. Maybe that's a good middle ground, but I would again defer to you all.
I don't know, and I'd like to throw the comment out there, I'm much better early in the day. So for me, an all-day thing means you get a bunch of meaty stuff done early. If we just did a half a day, but if we did it early in the day instead of in the evening, it would be much better for me just mentally. I don't know how the other commissioners are in your schedules if a morning would work for maybe our second Planning Commission meeting of the month, if it's more during the daytime, the morning time specifically. I don't know, how do you guys, does that work for anybody besides me?
I'm retired.
I'm seeing it doesn't work for anybody, really.
It works for me, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer the early, late afternoon, early evening scheduling, but I don't want to, I mean, I'll make whatever works for everyone else work.
I'm open to either one. Whatever you want to do, it's fine with me.
So what I'm hearing is a maximum of four, five-hour meeting is long enough. We don't want to do a full-day deal, and that's probably going to take more than two of them, maybe three. And I guess we leave the scheduling up to, there is a new program that people are using called Doodle, which is a way that all five of us can get on the calendar and play with what works.
Yeah, we don't have to make any final decisions this evening. Staff can certainly work with the chair to schedule it, send out a Doodle invite, and try to narrow down some times. I think we would aim to start in, you know, a four-to-six-week timeframe, to give the public and you all some opportunity to read and digest the information. But that would be kind of the range that we'd be shooting for.
So four to six weeks from now to start?
Yeah, approximately. No sooner.
Would we take the issues in the order that they are, 1 through 18?
That was the intent, but it's not set in stone. Certainly, if there's, you know, a reason or a feeling that we should take a different issue out of order, we would be amenable to that.
Does anybody feel, I'd just kind of like to nail the order, unless somebody feels that we need to change it, we'll just do it in that order, at least to start?
Yeah, and some of it may change as we go. You know, I expect it's going to be kind of a dynamic process, where we get into it, and then my expectation is we'll think of other issues as we go along, and, you know, it's going to be an evolving process, I think.
And would these be public hearings?
They will.
And so we would be getting noticed and all the data a week before?
Yes.
The Friday before?
Yeah, we'd advertise, and, you know, we're going to go above and beyond, try to get the word out, and hope we have some decent attendance.
And they'll be run like a Planning Commission meeting, where it's a public hearing, and people can speak, and then we bring it back and?
Yeah, the only thing that will be different is the time and perhaps the day, but everything else will be business as usual.
Well, that's another reason to not have it sort of midday on a weekday, because a lot of people would, might perceive that that's trying to, you know, thwart the public input.
Good point.
Well, I'm going to make a prediction here, that this turns out to be a much bigger deal.
Yeah.
I do think it is.
It's a big deal.
That's easy. That was an easy one.
Do we want to try and do any Saturday meetings?
Well, I think that was what staff might have been first recommending, was the day Saturday.
Well, it's, you know, it's something that we discussed, would be better for the public and the commissioners and everybody involved to do it during the week or on a weekend, and my guess is that it depends on the individual. We're certainly open to do it. Selfishly, I guess we'd rather do it during the week, but-
I saw some cringes.
You know, we're here to serve.
Saturday?
If that works best, we'll do it on a weekend.
You know, I'm thinking too, that, you know, once this then goes on to the council, they're going to be struggling with this same thing. And maybe we need to decide what kinds of meetings we need, so that that doesn't change. You know, if we decide the way we want to do it, and then it changes, let's make it easy for the, for the public, is who we, this, we need to get involved in this. So let's do this, you know, let's, let's both of us, both bodies, hold the same kind of meetings, same times during the day, same evenings, or whatever it is, so that the public gets used to this process, and we're not switching around.
I think that's good advice. We're going to have the same discussion with the City Council next week, and see how they like to proceed. Hopefully, it's somewhat in line, so that we can get something put together.
And if we do, you know, one to four items in one meeting, will those then go to City Council, so they're doing the same one to four items, and then, or are we going to?
I think our recommendation is going to be to let the Planning Commission do its work, get through all the issues, and come up with recommendations, so we're not playing ping-pong, going back and forth, and-
No, just to further my prediction here, not only, not only am I seeing that this is a big deal, these are big issues, and there's going to be lots of opinions, and if the public's going to attend, I'm also really concerned about duplication of, it goes through the Planning Commission, we bat these things all around, spend, I don't know how many hours we're going to be doing this, and then it goes to the City Council, and they start from scratch, basically.
Right.
And I don't know how to avoid that, but I think there needs to be some process where that doesn't happen, or this is going to be bigger than a big deal.
I think you're right, and I think that's the process that we're sort of beholden to. to. You know, as a Planning Commission, you're obligated to give the City Council a recommendation, and they're the legislative body of the city that has to make those final decisions. So I don't know.
Well, here's, here's an idea, that you, when you go to the City Council next week, express that concern, and get their direction as to how they would like the Planning Commission to participate in this process, so we don't spend 100 hours that are wasted.
Sure.
Maybe they have a representative that help us, or assist us, and so they get the intent of our discussions anyway.
We couldn't really do it in a joint meeting, right?
The more that I've heard this, I think somebody here is on the right path. We need to hold these meetings in the evening when the public can show up, because a lot of people in the community work. A, number one, our meetings, I'm talking about. Secondly, they should be at a scheduled time, so that they're the same time every month. And we should limit the number of items and stick strictly to them, because I'm the worst offender on that. You know, if we pick four, like you said, or we pick three, feel it out. Pick four the first time, if it doesn't work with four items, we can go to less and more meetings. But I think we need to start the process as soon as we're all through reading and digesting this. And I found the, what I would call the spreadsheet matrix in the back, very helpful. I think that's, that's excellent. I think, though, if I had to look up all these other websites to see what they did, I'd be, we'd be six months out before we'd start, you know? So I, I'm still, I'm, I'm an advocate for making it easier to you when you guys finalize the document that we're going to approve and send on to the City Council. I have no problem with you guys using that, but I, I can always remember that back in the old days, everybody wanted Capitola to be like Carmel. We're no more like Carmel than the man in the moon, you know, type of thing. And so their ordinance has just never fit. And it's true for a lot of the communities up in the wine country and other places, they don't fit here. We're a coastal community, and I didn't see a lot of reference to coastal communities, to be honest with you.
Sometimes the information is interesting from a perspective of...
Well, I love reading it.
Yeah, best practices, and how did they solve a problem that could, you know, we could learn from it. But is it possible to do some synopsis of some of those, so that Ron gets that benefit without having to go through all the websites?
That's what we tried to do, was to summarize what they do, and then give an example, should somebody want to find out exactly how they dealt with it. Because I think Commissioner Graves is correct. I mean, our community is unique, we have a unique set of issues, but individually, issues, I don't know that many are unique. I mean, throughout California, somebody deals with parking issues, and the tension between controlling design and decision-making, for instance. And there's a lot of different ways to handle it. And, you know, the way someone else does it may not work for us, but maybe it gives us a good idea, too. So that was the thought process with it.
Well, you know, you take up parking, and you see that's not a unique issue to here. It isn't. But when you take the size of our lots, you know, 30 by 30, or something like that, and try to apply the standards for parking from another area, they just don't work. And we've seen that, and the lots are so small, the garages turn out to be part of the living space, and now there's no parking, and the rest of it. So we have our own unique circumstance, and I just don't want to forget that, you know?
Absolutely.
Is the same package being presented to City Council?
It will be next week.
Next week, okay. I absolutely would love for the concern that Ed commented on really be presented to them, and make sure that we're on the right page, because there's nothing worse than going through this whole thing, and then having him flip it and do something different.
Well, that's their prerogative.
Yeah, I know. I know, but at least we can make it painful for him to do that.
But at least they can give us direction as to how they want to use the Planning Commission in their process.
Well said. Okay.
I would invite a member of the Planning Commission to attend, if you'd like, and to express some of those concerns, so that you convey it well, and maybe can have dialogue more effectively than I could. But I'm happy to try to capture that and introduce it.
I'd do that.
I unfortunately will be out of town next Thursday.
I plan on being at the meetings as well, so. That's the 12th, right? Is that the 12th?
Thank you. Moving along to Director's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a few items for you tonight. Last evening, we did have our housing element update community workshop, sparsely attended, unfortunately, nothing new. But we did get some good information, and we're proceeding with the housing element update. The good news is, we will have another public workshop, it'll be before you at a Planning Commission meeting. And that'll be before we release the draft to the state, so that you can take a look at it, give us some guidance. And then the idea will be to try to get certification from the state and wrap that process up. In a nutshell, this housing element, based on typical housing element experiences, is pretty benign. We don't need to find any new opportunity sites to accommodate higher-density, low-income housing. That's usually the big issue with housing elements. We have enough capacity right now to fit in the state numbers, so that's the good news for that.
With that, Rich, that's the part I found, TJ and I went last night and attended, we were part of the audience of about eight or whatever it was.
Oh, it's small.
Yeah. What really got me is, this seems such a benign housing element. We got the same goal, we've identified the areas, we've tried to encourage developers to look at those areas for a median or low and moderate stock and the rest of it. And I didn't want to ask this in front of everybody, how much did we pay the consultants for this?
I want...
It seemed like we could have almost took what we had, and sent to the state and got approved last time, with some upgrades, and words, and verbiage, and whatever the new high-tech num, little idiomatic expressions are, and done it ourselves, you know? Are we spending a lot of money on that?
Well, I wish it were that easy. The state does require that you give all new demographic data, and you update a lot of the background information that's...
But that's, that's what you're doing now, as I understood at the end of the meeting, getting that demographics now.
We are, that's...
To the consultant.
That's the work that the consultants do, and they're gonna do the work, be the liaison with HCD. I want to say the contract was approximately $40,000.
Okay.
And I think that's with contingency, so hopefully it'll come in a little lower than that. Still a lot of money, though.
Yep.
Also, from time to time, we've had questions at the commission meetings about the house, the incomplete house on the corner of Warf Road and Capitola Road. I am able to report that we have served the property owner with a citation. He has 90 days to complete the project, with no extensions, or we'll start finding. And I can only imagine where it's gonna end up, it's probably not gonna be a pretty place, but we are taking action on that. So we'll see.
You know, he doesn't have that much due on the outside, and then you'd never know what he is doing, you know?
Yeah. Ideal homes, we went to the City Council last week, they did grant a two-year extension, with the condition that they do some improvements on the frontage. So we're gonna work with the property owner and see if we can get some type of drought-tolerant landscaping, a fencing, a bench, some kind of public space to pretty it up. But they'll be there for at least a little while longer.
Great advertising.
How long do the cars stay?
The cars, I believe, are expected to be out of there by May or June.
Yeah, three months.
Yeah. Also, some of you may be receiving phone calls, we had a number of complaint calls about a, apparently, an unlicensed, unpermitted halfway house up in Cliffwood Heights, near Hidden Park. We're investigating, we just heard of that today, but I'm aware some City Council members got calls, so you may be as well. All I can report at this time is we're investigating, we really don't have all the facts, but we're gonna follow up on it and work with the state, if indeed they're operating without a license.
Is that considered transitional housing?
That would be supportive housing.
Supportive housing, okay.
As I understand their operation there.
Okay.
But they still, even with supportive housing, and they gotta be inspected and a whole bunch of other things.
Yeah, they're still subject to state regulations, and if you have more than six beds, you're subject to city regulations. And what's been reported to us is they have 14 beds, so that would put them under the purview of the city. Again, this is all hearsay, though, we haven't confirmed any of it, but just in case you get calls about it. And then finally, the City of Capitola has enrolled in the solar roadmap program. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. It's a federally-grant-funded program. They've hired a consultant to help cities throughout the West Coast streamline their solar permitting processes. They also provide assistance to citizens for cities that enroll in the process. Some of the benefits are, they give us free technical advice anytime, they provide us with templates for forms, applications, and provide financing options to make it easier for residents to implement solar if they choose. So I did mean to bring the link and bring it up on the website, but I didn't do that. So I'll send you all a link, if you're interested in looking at it, and that'll be something we continue to work on as we move forward, so.
And it identifies solar implementation in our community, is that what...
Yeah, so what they do, there's recently, I believe, there's a Senate bill that was passed that requires agencies to streamline their permitting processes for solar. For instance, if you want to build a new house under the new law, you'd have to have it all pre-wired to accommodate solar for somebody in the future, should they want to install it. So there's, there's also some of the procedural improvements, just with forms, making simple checklists, publishing information on the website, so it's easy for consumers to find information and see what the process is. As you may recall, we waived our fees entirely last year, it's free, if you want to permit those systems in Capitola today. So we're gonna continue to try to make it a more attractive option for our citizens.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Can I ask a question of staff? One question, and I'll be very specific. I've been up in Begonia Plaza quite a few times this week, and I know the City Council, in its infinite wisdom, allowed parking spaces in front of the veterinarian business there to place signs saying these could only be parked in by veterinarian customers, and they have remained, I've been there four times in the last two days, the spaces are all empty, and everything else in the complex is full. And what bothers me about it is, and I didn't go around from space to space, but other people within the complex are starting to put signs directly in front of their door that they're only for their customers. And then the majority of the spaces in the whole center are all marked with green curbs and 20 minutes. And I don't think any of this is really what we approved when we approved Begonia Plaza and Star Plaza also, they were done together, you know? They have master sign permits, they have everything else. And I just wonder if we could look into it, because it seems like New Leaf is suffering, and other people up there are suffering simply because the parking spaces aren't being used.
We can take a look.
Okay.
Other commission communications?
I have something. There's another sign next to the Toyota sign on the Caltrans fence, having to do with swimming lessons.
Having to do with what, I'm sorry?
Swimming lessons.
Oh, I didn't see that one.
You know, just...
It used to be lacrosse, but I think they've changed it to swimming lessons.
I've seen the lacrosse steak signs on 41st Avenue, but I hadn't seen that, so yes, thank you. And will you get back to us on the Kia sign? I might be wrong on that, it might have been approved, but I don't remember. Thank you.
Just one thing for me, and there's probably nobody at home still listening, but the Capitola Museum's new exhibit on postcards is now open. We're having our grand opening reception on the 21st of March. And we're gonna be inviting, you know, the VIPs from the city and the entire community to come out and see the new exhibit. It's a great exhibit, very exciting, very fun. We didn't know there was a history to postcards, much less what it was, and it's quite interesting. With no other comments, then we'll adjourn to the next Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, April the 2nd. All right? Thank you all.
Thank you.